And ask you all to rise and join me in the flag salute, please turn to the right. I pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, and let's see. We're at the approval of the agenda. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to defer the student board member comments until later in the meeting because Morgan couldn't get here earlier.
Sounds good to me.
Let me make that that motion because the president cannot make motions.
Thank you.
I also have a comment. I would like to amend the agenda to include some report out from Leanna, myself, and even Dana about the WASTA conference.
Could we do that under superintendent update, Arla? Rather than we can include it in her teaching and learning update?
We'll do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there any further discussion? The motion is to approve the agenda with the amendment of moving the student board member comments to later in the evening when Morgan can get here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Now we are at the, there are no public comments on agenda items. So we are at the consent agenda. The consent agenda enables the board to efficiently deal with matters that have been delegated to the superintendent, but by law must be approved by the board. Items on the consent agenda are voted upon as one block and approved with one vote. An item may be removed from the consent agenda only upon approval of a majority of the board. So I would ask for a motion to either approve the consent agenda or modify.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it is written.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, I'll ask a roll call vote. All in favor, Arla?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And I vote aye and the motion passes. And now we are at the Sand Hill presentation. Yes, as you know, we try to have each building bring you up to date on some, on what's going on in their location, and this month we have Principal Jason Swazer and Vice Principal Amber Nygaard from Sand Hill to bring you their update.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us join in and share about Sand Hill Elementary School. We kind of had the overarching thing that you wanted to hear about what makes us special at Sand Hill. And really it boils down to the kids are what makes us special. That's what our focus is, that's where our lens is always, is always at. In addition to that, it's our employees, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna end, I'm gonna start and end by just saying how, how hard and how dedicated our teaching staff is in the district. And sometimes we don't feel like we get the recognition educators publicly that we deserve. And I know Dana feels that way as well, and she's working hard to make that known, but I do really want everyone to know that our teachers are coming in early, staying late, working through their plan, collaborating through their lunches in order to try to adjust to the new environment that we find ourselves in. And some of the gaps that exist now that we have never experienced before. So acknowledge our teachers at the beginning, and I'd like to do the same at the end, but so that's our welcome, and I'm gonna hand it over to Amber for the next slide.
All right, so we, we have worked really hard to create our CSIP, our Consolidated School Improvement Goals, and share those with not just staff, but the community and family, and we presented that in our special session that we had with the board previously. Some, we're committed to improvement, no matter what the times are giving us right now. Jason and I as a team work really, really hard to support our staff and to support them in that commitment to improvement. We're not okay with just being okay, and we know our students deserve us to continue to stretch and grow. We understand that all behavior is communication, so we want to make sure that we're accepting that, acknowledging it, and working through that with our students, our staff, and our families. And education is no longer just academics, and so we feel that that's important for our families to understand and continue to train ourselves and our staff on how do we ensure that all of the other whole child social emotional needs of a student and our staff are being addressed and responded to so that we can get to the academics and truly create learners. So we're committed to that improvement, no matter what the times are giving us right now. We just can't afford to sit idle, and we want to share that with you as well. You're muted, Jason.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so the next slide, data, you can't argue with, so when we look at our data, some of it is not pleasant to look at, and, but we have to face it. And so in looking at last year's data and other data points, collectively, we, we came to decide on a few things and establish three building goals that really reflected that data and is seeking improvement with the strategies and things we're implementing, so. One of the, one of our goals was for all of our students to level up, means go up a higher level in the FastBridge progress monitoring tool that we, that we use collectively and/or meet and exceed the projected growth that that platform says for a student, so. In order to do that, we have established what we call a win time. And that's what I need. And so we've embedded a 60-minute block of intervention time for all kids in ELA throughout the day. Teachers analyze their weekly progress monitoring data, and we move kids from one teacher to another if needed in order to provide that student with what they need. So it's a skill-based collaborative data-based intervention. So that's what we're, that's what we call win time. Every grade has 60 minutes of that. And teachers, in order to decide what their kids need, they really need to have that weekly progress monitoring and that structure around their professional learning communities so that they can make collective decisions about all of their students in the grade level. So another thing we wanted to implement based on our goals is is, is the inclusionary model with equitable access to grade-level core instruction. And previously, we, we have seen in what produced some of the data was some of our students, specifically our students who were learning English, ELL students and our, our students who needed IEP support, were not necessarily able to or were, were able to access the core instruction with our current, with our master schedule, so. We've embedded that time where all students are in the core instruction. All of our kids are included, and we push in that support during the 60-minute win time block to help, to help kids with the skills they need so that they can access that core instruction. And so that's one of our inclusionary things we're introducing, and then we're increasing our data, data literacy for all of our staff and students. And I mentioned that before, with that FastBridge platform, we stick on that platform. All of our teachers are progress monitoring all their students weekly, and they're looking at that data and making decisions on a six-week period on what students need, where they have grown, and where they have perhaps not grown, and what interventions we need to change. Did I miss anything there, Amber?
Just wanted to add that we don't just do win time for ELA, because I know that that's gonna be a question, is we also in our master schedule have embedded an additional 30 minutes of intervention for our math time as well. And all of our students are not just receiving support in reading and writing, but also in mathematics.
Yeah, thanks, Amber.
This one's me, right?
That's right.
Okay, so as I said before, we know that behavior is communication, and just as myself, as a learner, and as an adult in the building, we are learning that adults communicate by behavior often, and our students and children do as well. And when you really understand the homes and the situations that not just our students, but our staff come to work, come to the building with daily, we have to do a lot of trauma-informed instruction. And we learn about the brain and how trauma affects the brain and how that makes learning challenging or different for different students. So we continue to refer back to that when we're planning instruction for our teachers to truly understand how to make new pathways so that learning is more absorbed and accepted for our students. We have, Dana will laugh, but I'll say, you know, there's a little bit of tough love that has to go into learning. It, we don't dismiss a student's abilities and their capabilities because of what they may be experiencing at home. We try to understand that and empathize with that, but we truly believe that high expectations for all of our students with the proper supports and the belief that they can achieve those high expectations is what makes them learners and will get the growth. So we don't dismiss what they're going through, but we, we believe in them and we have those high expectations. I deal with a lot of behaviors because that's kind of my area that I, I love to work in. But anytime a kid is having a challenge or adult, we'll talk about, I mean, our staff is going through the same stuff. Our students are going through. We have inquiry-based conversations rather than pointing a finger and saying you, you, you. We really want to understand why it is the behavior is the way it is and how we can help them be successful and achieve and really share with them the importance of changing those behaviors so that they can be successful learners.
Could you give an example?
Sure, um. So let me think of, of today, we had, we, we very rarely, we're, we're very, very lucky, our teachers are doing an amazing job managing behaviors within the classroom, so. One little guy came in late, and he often has a para as extra behavior support, and I was in a classroom doing an observation. So rather than him being greeted with, you're late, you've got to get your stuff together and move on to your group. The teacher stopped the class, asked everybody to welcome him friendly, she had already had a breakfast set aside for him, told him, go ahead, sit down and have breakfast. He had breakfast, he did not want to move to his group during win time because it was in a different class, and he had came in behind. I watched other students sit with him and say that he could come and read with them while he was eating breakfast. Partway through the lesson, he was not participating in the manner that the teacher said. She had said, you may go to your win time group, or you may sit here and read silently to yourself while you're eating. He got a little squirrely and didn't want to do that, and so the teacher just asked him what was going on. Why don't you want to go to the group? And he said, everybody's going to look at me when I walk in there. So we just kind of watched the timing of the rotations, and instead of sending him into an uncomfortable situation which was causing the behavior, she waited until that next rotation was happening and other students were moving so that he would gradually walk in with the students rather than forcing him to be uncomfortable and have that attention on him. So that was an example we saw today in class.
All right, thanks.
All right, so our next slide, we titled Student-Driven Learning. A couple bullets we want to include here, and we know that in order for students to learn, they have to have that sense that they were involved in the process, that they have a say in the direction of, of the learning. And in order to do that, one thing we created as, as a building instructional team is, one of our goals is we want to see students become independent learners. And so we looked at some of the language in our report card and adjusted some of the language in order to reflect what an independent learner looks like, so we have a better understanding and are able to gather data on what we would like to see as an independent learner. In addition to that, we're asking that students, and we haven't, we haven't got there yet, but we're working on it, and we know it's important. Students are involved in their goal setting, and they currently are involved in their goal. They meet with the teacher, they know what, what they need to achieve. And a lot of our students are tracking their progress along with the teacher. So having students buy in, sitting them down for a certain amount of time so that they understand where they're at, where they need to go, and you ask the student, what are some strategies you're gonna use to get to that goal? There's that buy-in, then we can communicate that with the families, this is your goal, and the student can go home and communicate that, this is where I need to go. And tracking their progress in some form of visual, in some visual form. And this is kindergarten through fifth, kindergartners can track their progress and their growth as well. So that's two ways that we are incorporating students and student voice into our learning. Another is our universal, universally-designed learning, which is a focus in PD district-wide, where we are all learning about how to offer students choice or how to scaffold and get them the, the, for example, in a reading passage, get them the verbs or the vocabulary where they're gonna see ahead of time so that they have a better way to comprehend when they get into the book, so. And providing a wide range of choice for students. And then our last, and I want to wrap it up again with how amazing our staff is at Sand Hill and district-wide, working literally tirelessly to meet the needs of what we're seeing today. I see it every day. And I'm really proud of what our teachers are doing for our students and our families and our community as a whole. Making sure to follow all the, all the commitments that we have made as a building team, even though they are challenging. So kind of our motto this year was, we are in it to win it, and win also is a reference to what I need. Students get what they need during English, during reading and math. And we have a sense that we don't, we don't win unless, we don't win if our kids don't. And again, like I said, with our staff, every single day, they're working hard and they're doing extremely hard things. And we are one team, we collaborate together, we process the good, we process the bad with the lens of students first. And that's all we got.
Well, that's a lot, really a lot. And Jason and Amber, I, I want you to know that I personally want to thank the staff for all that they do, and that seems kind of a weak thing to say, knowing all that they're going through as people in their own own sense, but as teachers and responsible for all those little people in their classroom. And you and Amber as well, leading that building, I think it's just a, it's something that we can't say thank you enough for, and we can't show enough appreciation, but let them know from me personally, and I think I speak for the rest of the board that they are appreciated.
Thank you, Laura.
Can we ask?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd like to, what are the response, what is the buy-in? I mean, what you've presented, you know, sounds impressive, and of course, I regard all you guys as heroes. I mean, here we are, you're teaching in a war zone. I mean, everything is up in the air, and how to bring any order to it, you know, is incredible. In order to bring people to the, I heard, heard the point about bringing people to the point where they could learn. So what have been, what is, what kind of buy-in to your special program? What I need and all the rest of it, have you had from, from the parents? What kind of response have you had?
I've had really quality responses in the way that it's presented. It makes, it makes sense when you break down a student based on data of what skill deficits they have, and then we address those deficits directly and progress monitor them weekly and see their growth through a four to six-week period if what we're doing is working or not, and we adjust or we celebrate.
Do you lament the amount of time? I mean, this is, I haven't got an agenda for this question, but do you lament the amount of time you have to spend in bringing students to the place where they could learn? I was very sensitive to the observation that, you know, you, it's not just learning, it's other things as well. I mean, not just the curriculum, it's getting people to, to the place where they can engage with the, with the curriculum. Do you, do you feel you're spending too much time on that and not enough on the curriculum? Or do you wish you could be in a place where you could spend more time on the curriculum? Man, what's it feel like?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know, Amber, I see you, you want to go too. I would say that we could spend more time on some social, emotional behavioral concerns with students. I feel like we, we front-load a lot of that information at the beginning, and we continue in small doses throughout the year, but especially this year, the amount of effort we invest in that, in getting students to the point where they can learn is imperative.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. I wanted to ask how, Jason and Amber, how do you guys keep the morale up of the staff? You know, you guys are working so hard, so what kinds of things, you know, are you doing to keep morale up?
We, we do a lot, like, we, we were talking about that this morning, that, you know, and I know that Bell Far Elementary, they shared their December dress-up days, and we've been doing that for a few years where we plan activities and spirit days, and we try to do luncheons, and monthly, we try, just from Jason and I, try to do acts of gratitude for our staff, whether it's handwritten notes, post-it notes, shout-outs. We're, we are open and available for conversations all the time, so we don't, we don't just get to celebrate together, we cry together, we are frustrated, we're mad, we're angry together. So I think that that helps our morale where I think our, our staff sees us as human, and we model human emotions and behaviors, and we allow them to kind of throw them at us, and we will absorb those for them, so, because they need to express it a lot, but I think we're just really, we're, we're human, we're human beings with them, and we allow those emotions, we process through it with them, and they know that we're, we're not gonna ask them to do anything that we don't 100% believe is important and valuable, and they, they know that we respect what they're doing and their time, and so they're very reciprocal in that respect, that if we have some things that we need do or say, it's very well-absorbed that way.
And baked goods.
Yes. Sugar.
Well, I think what you guys are doing is great. I mean, I haven't had, particularly since we've had the plague, I haven't been able to, you know, visit classrooms and stuff like that. But I remember from a few years back when I was coaching for the, when we had We the People in the, in the high school, there were so many people that were just not prepared to study any of this stuff. I mean, you name it, it's difficult to get down to a threshold. I mean, I believe in the ability of the students, but if you haven't learned how to learn, if you haven't learned how to engage material, how to study, and taken on some of the identity of a student, there's limited things a teacher can do. So bringing people to the position where they can learn, I think is absolutely crucial. And I celebrate you folks for your efforts.
Okay, thank you, John. If there's nothing else, then let's move on with the agenda. We are at Board Development and Linkage, and I see that our student board member, Morgan, has joined us. And Morgan so aptly pointed out that as a student board member, he, they have the right to vote on issues at the time as regular members. However, their vote will be considered as advisory only, but we want to know what they're thinking and how they're thinking. They do represent an entire population that we need to know what's, where, where everybody's coming from and how they would view the decisions that we make. So I'm inviting Morgan to become that advisory vote on any further items we have on the agenda that require a vote. And then Morgan, at the end where we have good of the order, we, we were thinking we would put your, your report there, if that's okay with you.
That will work, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are at Board Development and Linkage, oath of office for newly re-elected board members. So we will do this officially, even though we're on Zoom, so I will ask you to stand one at a time and repeat after me. So we'll begin with Arla Shepherd-Bull. And to raise your right hand. I don't see you on my screen, are you doing all that?
There you are.
There you are. I, Arla Shepherd-Bull.
I, Arla Shepherd-Bull.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties, I might have missed a word there, you cut in and out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties.
I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Director, District Five.
Of the Office of Director, District Five.
North Mason School District Board of Directors.
North Mason School District Board of Directors.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Here, here.
Leanna Crotsir, if you will stand and raise your right hand. I, Leanna Crotsir, do solemnly swear.
I, Leanna Crotsir, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties.
I will faithfully and impartially, say that again.
Perform and discharge the duties.
And perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Director, District Two.
As the Office of Dir- Director, District Two.
North Mason School District Board of Directors.
North Mason District's Board of Directors, did I just say that right?
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations to you. Great, thank you, and congratulations to our newly and re-elected board members. So we are now at Board Reorganization, the election of the Board President. I will call for nominations for the Office of Board President to serve for a one-year term. One or more board members can be nominated to serve as president. To be eligible for election, the nomination must have a second. Once nominations are closed, I will call for a roll call vote of all elected board members. Once nominations are closed, I will call for a roll call vote of all elected board members as well as an advisory vote from our student representative. Do I hear a nomination for president?
I nominate Leanna Crotsir for president.
Leanna, would you accept that nomination?
I will.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for president?
Can only board members?
I will need a second.
Or can guests nominate as well?
Only board, I know, it's just board members. I am only the second to that nomination.
I second the nomination.
Thank you, Art. All right. So now I'll call for a roll call vote. Um, Arla? And the current, the language is I, Laura Bode, vote for Leanna Crotsir for president. And Arla?
Okay. I, I, Arla Shepherd-Bull, vote for, for Leanna Crotsir for president.
Okay, Art?
Hi, Art Whitman, vote for Leanna Crotsir for Board President.
And John?
I, John Campbell, vote for Leanna Crotsir for Board President.
And Leanna?
I, Leanna Crotsir, vote for myself. For Board President. Thank you.
Right. Congratulations. Um, and this time I will turn the meeting over to Leanna and congratulations, Leanna.
Thank you, Laura. Okay. And so, uh, thank you all. And, um, I'll get my gavel later as well. Um, so I, uh, will entertain a uh, nomination for Board Vice President at this time.
I would like to nominate Arla Shepherd-Bull for Board Vice President.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, second. I second.
Okay. And, uh, and so I will do a roll call vote, uh, for that. So, uh, Laura, same as before.
I, Laura Bode, vote for Arla Shepherd-Bull for Vice President.
Okay. And John?
I, John Campbell, vote for Arla Shepherd-Bull for Vice President.
All right. And Art?
I, Art Whitman, vote for Arla Shepherd-Bull for Vice President.
And Arla?
I, Arla Shepherd-Bull, will vote for myself as Vice President.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you if you would accept that. So, um, I'm going to take you nominating yourself that you are accepting that. And I, Leanna Crotsir, um, nominate, uh, Arla as the Vice President.
Don't forget, don't forget Morgan, student board.
Oh, and Morgan, what, what say you?
I'm Morgan Thomas, vote for Arla Shepherd-Bull as Board Vice President.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, this is exciting, fresh and new. Um, and, uh, so we're on to the superintendent update. Do we have any, um, um, I'll turn it over to Dana.
Thank you. Uh, we will begin with, as usual, with our budget status report, dashboard report, and financial reports from Vieton Moi.
All righty. So, um, reporting on the month of November. Start with our capital projects, um, fund balance. So in November, our capital projects fund balance is about $430,000. Um, for debt service fund, our fund balance is $134,000. You'll notice a major increase of about $1.6 million. And that is because I had to, um, pay off some of our COVID debt this month, I'm sorry, in the month of November. And then for our ASB fund balance, we're at $412,000. About a $609 increase from last month. Uh, and then our cash register fund.
Do I think we can do about the sound? It's kind of.
Okay. Yes, let me turn this off. Uh, can you hear me better now?
That is better.
Okay, awesome. All right. So then, uh, moving on to our FTE. Student FTE on the next page. Um, for our, um, FTE count for the month of November, we are at 2,264 FTE. This does include running start. So it's about a two, 2.3-ish, um, increase in FTE. All right. And then moving on to our Forecast Five, um, dashboard. When I'm reporting this, when I say year-to-date, I'm meaning as of November 30th, 2021. We'll start with the revenue. Um, year-to-date, we projected a total revenue of about 21% and we brought in about 19%. For local sources, we projected a total revenue of 18% and we brought in about 21%. For our state sources, we projected a total revenue of 20% and we brought in 21%. And then for our federal sources, we projected total revenue of 26% and we brought in about 11%. And then looking at our top 10 sources of revenue with, um, apportionment, of course, being our top source of 4.4 million year-to-date. And then looking at our revenues by sources, you can see purple being current year, red being prior year. Um, year-to-date, uh, for local sources, we are trending, um, very behind. And that is, of course, we did not collect any levy money in 2021. Um, so of course that will change in April of next year when the levy money, um, does come through. So for our state fund, I'm sorry, state sources, um, we are trending right about the same as prior year, except for last year. Uh, and then for federal, we're trending more than we did previous years. And I, I, that is because we are starting to claim more on ESRS. Now we're, we're putting in those ESRS, um, claims through our OSPI system. And then for the next page, we'll look at, uh, the exact same thing, except the, I'm sorry, one up Jackie. There you go. Um, we'll look at the exact same thing, except we'll look at the expenditure side. So our, uh, projected year-end balance is about 14% of our budgeted expenditures. And we want to be around eight to 10%, so for a good shake there. For our total expenditures, um, year-to-date, we have expended 24%. I'm sorry, 22% and we projected an expenditure of about 24%. In our salaries and benefits, we projected and are trending at exactly 23%. And then for our basic ed, um, we projected 25% and we've expended about 20%. For, uh, the top 10 expenditure by program with, of course, basic ed being our top, um, source of expenditure at 3.7 million. And then our expenditures by object, um, again, purple being current year, red being prior year. We are expending more, um, this year than we did last year in our salaries. Um, we did, we did hire about 40 new personnel, so that would make sense. And then for our supplies, we're not expending as much. Um, that also makes sense. We did a lot of our bulk purchasing last year when, um, last year, when COVID started, whenever that year was. And then, um, purch- purchased services with school being open full-time now, um, we are expending more than we did last year when it was closed for part of the time. And then third page, um, we'll take a look at our month-end balance. So as of November, um, 30th, our ending fund balance, uh, is about 2.5 million. This is consistent with previous, um, school years. And you can see that our current projection is we'll have an ending fund balance of about 5.4 million. And that is because I put in, I showed in this chart that we'll be collecting, um, levy money in April, which is going to help our fund balance. Okay, Arla, uh, you asked, what is a good example of purchase service, a professional contract? That's correct. So like, um, sometimes we'll have to contract out to, um, like, for example, um, nurses because they're hard to find. So we do like a contracted services for them. So yes, you're correct. All right. And then last one, um, we'll kind of look at our financial summary from a high-end level. Our, uh, we'll start with revenue. Our current year-to-date revenue is about 6.9 million total. And we did budget it about 35 million. So we took, uh, we brought in about 19% of our total revenue year-to-date. And then for our expenditures, we, um, have expended about 8.3 million. And we budgeted 36.7 million. So we have expended about 22% of our total budget. And that is, um, that concludes this, this portion.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, uh, Vieton. And next is teaching and learning. And we did say that we would move some comments from, um, Leanna and Arla in some discussion about their attendance at the WASDA conference and the learning that they got to take part in. So, um, we'll start with Leanna and Arla talking about that as our teaching and learning update begins.
Arla, do you want to, do you want to start that? Your experience? Am I muted? Okay.
I can.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, I don't mind. Um, I took some notes here just for myself. I think overall it was really a fantastic experience. It felt like a really cohesive, put-together organization. And for myself as a new board member, it was educational. Um, you know, not only in the specific, um, you know, the specific actual content that they shared, but in my understanding of what WASDA even is and the types of resources that they offer, I found that to just be pretty enlightening. Um, I took a bootcamp class and, um, got some really valuable feedback from, um, like the panel of superintendents that they had sharing their experiences about what they've, um, liked best about their own relationships with their boards. I thought the keynote speeches were wonderful, fantastic. Um, and then a piece that I really, that really stayed with me was, um, the Board of Distinction Awards Ceremony and hearing about the different things that these, um, award-winning boards have done over the past year. Um, you know, the way that they were committed to students and improvement was very inspiring. Um, and I feel like that was a big takeaway for me. Um, you know, wanting to take away, well, what can our board do to learn and grow? And, you know, one piece that stuck out was sh- short-term, um, goal-setting that one district implemented. Um, I think it was the Steelakoom District. I might have shared that video with Jackie to share to the group. Um, I think particularly with where we're at with our district and the recent passage of the levy. You know, and the fact that the levy, you know, pretty narrowly passed. I feel that we have an opportunity to really, um, you know, now work as one with the community to create a sort of plan of action, a short-term. Um, really a conversation piece because I know we do the work, we're doing the work already, but how can we communicate to the public? You that, you know, hey, here's the levy, here's what we're going to do with those levy dollars that you gave us. And I feel like we have a four, you know, we really have four years to kind of prove to the community and build that trust. Um, you know, that we are good stewards of the finances that they've granted us. Um, I know from being on the levy committee that it was really a hard-fought, um, whole process. And we're very grateful that it passed, but I think we have a lot of work to do. So hearing from other boards and seeing what they've overcome and, um, how they sort of structured their message around, um, you know, how they're, how they're going to reach their academic benchmarks was really inspiring to me. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Arla. Um, so, uh, my experience, uh, every year that I get to attend, um, cause I, it was last year and we went the year before, but not last year. Um, and I didn't know how much I missed it until I got back there. And they really, um, they simplified it, uh, this year. Um, lack of, you know, as many people, you know, the attendance was a little bit lower and, um, but I really think that the way that they, um, brought it down and offered just a little bit less gave me less anxiety that I wasn't missing something. So it was, uh, it was nice because we were kind of, um, it kind of felt like everybody was connected as we were, um, going around and visiting, um, each of the breakout sessions and whatnot. And the way that they did it, um, with, in the beginning is where they would throw all these things at you that you can go and, and see. And it was a lot of it that they would put in, in the beginning was, um, other districts, um, how they were dealing with certain things. And they saved most of that till the end. Um, which was nice because then you didn't feel if you left that a little bit early, um, and you didn't stay until, what was it, seven o'clock at night? Then you weren't really missing much. And if you really wanted to know, you could have, um, you could reach out to that, uh, district and get some more information, um, if it was something that you really needed. Um, one of the things that I decided this time, um, because it is a hot topic, is the critical race theory and what, um, equity, uh, means, um, to a district, uh, especially educational equity. Um, and I did learn a lot. Um, I learned a lot what it meant to people. I learned that there is, um, there are different people in different districts and a different, uh, type of, um, um, different, um, communication and different cultures. And, um, it meant something different to everybody. And that there is a difference, um, although not, uh, there, what is the difference between critical race theory and educational equity? Um, and how that, and what that, how people, other people defined it. Um, and so I really, um, like later here, we're going to look at our, um, educational equity here. Um, and I, I really appreciate, um, how far along that North Mason is after looking at all of the other districts and how many people raised their hands in tears because they were scared and they were behind and they felt like they weren't prepared for what was coming. Um, and sometimes it was just a simple, like, they just needed to take a deep breath and relax and see the simplicity in it. Um, uh, even though it's very complex, but, um, I think that when you have a lot of eyes on you, um, and you have a lot of things, um, a lot of people saying things that you, uh, don't agree with, that you know, in your heart of hearts of how much people are working hard, um, that it's hard, uh, to not let that affect you. So I really appreciate the road that I got to take and look at not just equity and what it meant to everybody else. But I even went back and if you just go to our policies and put in the key word equity, um, you will find many policies pop up with that word in it and that we have had in place for many years. So, um, and I think that a lot of other districts, um, are just now starting. And one of the questions was, are, where are you, um, in the, um, not adopt, I guess, adopting, are you in the adoption phase, phase of, um, of e- equity, educational equity or critical race theory or whatever that, um, is going to mean to your district? Um, and the end result was, are you at the monitoring stage? And there was three stages and I'm really bad with my brain, so I can't remember exactly how they broke it out. But, um, we are at the monitoring, um, side of it, uh, after looking at it. And because of of how we have educational equity, that was, that's our policy here that we're, we're looking at. And and we're getting to see what's going on in our district. And I'm sure that Dana, um, if she could always, uh, pop up and tell us about it, you know, and it's not something new, you know, and because that's what, uh, North Mason shines for is that, um, the equity, um, instead of. instead of the, versus the equality. I guess that's another one to explain to people. And they do give you a little, a little picture, and I was gonna bring it. There was a picture of showing when these, like, these three kids that are standing and looking over the fence to watch a baseball game. And each one of them were given the same size box, and they're three different sizes of kids. This was the first one, and that was equality. They all got the same box. And one kid still couldn't see over. One kid, you know, was way up there and still could see in the middle. You know, it just, it wasn't the same. But then in the other, in the equity side, they show where the boxes are all different sizes, but now the kids are all the same, all the same height than they can all see. So my take off of it was that every kid equally will get a toolbox. But in that toolbox, there are going to be different tools that are designed for them to be able to succeed. So everybody has the same, the same opportunity to succeed. So I'm very proud of our district. And I bragged a little bit just to say thank you to our district. And if people needed to ask questions that were freaking out a little bit, to call Dana. And she would have wonderful things to tell them. So that is my report on that.
And I will just add briefly, it was a really amazing conference. It, because of the COVID experience of different districts across the state, they, the conference was completely hybrid. So all of the sessions were both in-person and streamed. So it was really interesting to see how all of that worked. And it was very targeted to support board members and administrators in addressing the really hard conversations and issues that we're dealing with right now. And I was so pleased to be able to be there with some of our board members to take part in that and so impressed with how effectively WASDA developed a plan to support things in districts across the state right now, because we really are dealing with a lot of really difficult things. So it was a powerful learning opportunity for all of us.
Dana, can I just interrupt real quickly? And this is where we were going to have the student rep representative report.
Yes.
Oh, yep.
Yeah, let's do that. And then I will have some things, additional things to talk about. So let's go, Morgan.
Okay, I'll try not to take up too much time. So going off of what we were talking about earlier, the WASDA conference, I did find out that student reps were also invited to attend that also. I was not aware of that. So make sure to attend that next year.
Yeah.
But.
Morgan, if I can.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we were being very protective of our student reps this year, but we will go back to inviting our student reps to go with us next year.
Okay, sounds good. But I have been, so there is currently a WASDA student rep network. And we meet every two weeks. And we discuss various things going on in our districts. We share different ideas. And so something that they brought up that we, that is kind of coming down the pipe is in this next legislative session, they are, there are some bills in the works. We're not sure what, what exactly how they would work yet. Where they would make student reps voting members instead of just an advisory vote. And because right now, as the law stands, it can just, we can only do an advisory vote because we are not elected by the voters. And so that may change. It may be we run our own campaigns like any normal board member would do, or the board authorizes someone to represent the students. And we're not sure how exactly that's gonna work yet. Sounds like there may be some testifying that we'll get to do and some advocating we get to do. And not just that, but for a few other bills that are also in the works. And they also talked about, there is a national trip to DC for the, where, let me find the name here. Where the NSBA conference, the student reps are also invited to. I'm not sure of the details about that yet. I just know it's the 22nd, January 22nd, 23rd. I'm not sure of the details yet about that. But there, there'll be a chance, if not this, meet, this meeting, but sometime later in the year, where either us as student reps or the boards will be able to meet with our US senators and our representatives, which will be kind of cool to get some, talk to them about some stuff in education in Washington and the country. What else do we have here? That, that's about all that I have. Audrey had some more stuff, but she was unfortunately not able to make it. So we should be able to hear her full report next month, hopefully.
Thank you so much. Sort of related to teaching and learning, that kind of in between that and capital projects, I did want to let the board know that we've all been anticipating getting some input and as a result of the most recent census into our districting and/or potentially redistricting based on population shifts within our community. We have contracted with an organization that supports all the districts in Washington with this work, all the school districts, and have just received a preliminary report that we will need to look at and have some discussion about. Before we go to the next steps of the process, there are some minor adjustments to do potentially to our director districts. So as a result of that, I would like us to think, when we get to that part of the agenda later, about putting together or planning a study session to take a look at the data that we got back and what those potential map changes look like. So I think that's really important to understand. And then looking at capital projects and facilities, it's important that the board know that we've had some emergencies in our water systems over the last month. There will be some work done over the Christmas holidays at the district office and at Sand Hill. The district office will not be open at all for anybody to work on December 30th, because the water system will be turned off while they're doing that work there. And of course, Sand Hill is closed for the holidays, so they'll be able to get some work done there as well. And so that's just for your information. And then finally, prior to the COVID shutdown in March of 2020, we were starting to get pretty close to a final disposition of the Feller Wetlands property and a trans, a potential transfer to another governmental agency. And that kind of stopped because that agency had a pretty severe impact to their operations during the COVID shutdown and had a lot of changes in personnel. And so it just didn't get pursued on their end. We have recently heard from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife that they are really raring to go and ready to wrap up that transfer and complete our negotiations and complete the things that we have to do as a board to approve or to consider and approve that potential transfer. We're still discussing what, what that might look like on both ends. And we have some things to agree to in, in principle, then to bring to the board for discussion. We, we aren't quite there. And our district council, our attorney Denise Stifarm, is actually getting to take some vacation. And so she will not be able to oversee that process working with WDFW until after the holidays at the beginning of January. But potentially, we will have an agenda item to discuss further the idea of the transfer of property in our January agenda. So I wanted to let you know of that. And that's my report.
Awesome. That'll be exciting. Okay, and so we are down to upcoming board letter columnists. And I actually do have mine for November, and I haven't forwarded it, and it is coming. And I'm super late. So December is Laura Bode and January, Arla, February, Art, and March is John. And, and that is that. And then we are on to the assurance of organizational performance and policy review. And I will read this part here like Laura does. And the school board adheres to the principles of policy governance. The board has written four set of policies, N's executive requirements, board superintendent relationships, and governance process. The N policy describes the student outcomes the superintendent is charged with achieving. And the executive requirement policies set the parameters within which the superintendent must operate as she leads the district toward the expected ends. And the board superintendent relationships policies describe the way in which the board will oversee the superintendent's performance and the superintendent will support the board. And the governance process policies describe how the board and its individual members shall conduct business and represent the community and relate to each other. No less than one year, the board receives and considers evidence regarding the level of compliance with the provisions of these four sets of policies, a few at each meeting. And the following are those policies to be monitored during this meeting. And has everyone had the opportunity to read the monitoring report? Yes, yes, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And were there any comments?
Looks good to me.
Okay. And so.
I would, I would just like to, can I just offer that? The budget execution ER5. That's the one we're on right now, right?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to add, and it doesn't say this in there, but our executive director of finance, together with our superintendent, have put us in a very good position financially by being so prudent with their budget projections. I feel like that's something that we really should be blowing our horn about, because there are other districts around us that are in deep trouble, because they didn't, they didn't spend enough time managing how they projected the enrollment. So I would like to really commend our executive director of finance, along with our superintendent, for executing our budget fiscally, prudently, and responsibly.
Thank you, Laura. And I agree, not just our neighboring districts, but I heard a lot at the WASDA conference of how many people are in trouble. And, and we were grinning and smiling with a sigh of relief because of the hard work that you guys have done. So, so at this point, I believe that I entertain a motion. Do I, I break these two apart? I do them separately? Or do I, I entertain a motion to, that we recommend that, let's see, the board finds the superintendent's performance to comply with ER5. I will do a roll call.
I'd like to make a motion that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER5.
Okay. And, and any, and then I will, okay, and then I will go roll call on this.
First, you should ask for discussion, just to be.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. And any discussion on that?
I think we need to do more to inform the community about how good we are. I think that that's, this is very impressive achievement, because it's not new. And this indicates continuity over time, which I think is a really important thing for any organization, particularly ours.
Thank you, John. Yes, I agree. Absolutely. So not hearing any conversation about that and discussion, then I will do a roll call vote. John?
I.
Art?
I.
Arla?
Hi.
Okay. And Laura?
Hi.
And I as well. So that is good to go.
And the student, the student representative?
Oh, and stu, I'm sorry, and the student representative, Morgan?
I.
Thank you. All right. And then we are on to the ER8, communication and counsel to the board. And this, I will entertain a motion to, to approve the, the board that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER8.
And Chairman, I move that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER8.
Okay. And discussion?
I would just like to commend the superintendent for her no-surprise policy, which means that whatever is shuffling around out there in the schools, we usually get a heads up as a school board, and just in case we get the phone call as well. I appreciate that, and I appreciate her level of confidentiality when she does relay information to us.
I agree. Yes. Okay, so I will, any other discussion? Not hearing any? I will roll call vote here. And I'm just going down my list, so I'm not picking anybody out of the thing here. So, John?
I.
Okay, Art?
I.
Arla?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Okay, so that is.
And you need.
And Morgan.
To vote too.
And Morgan, I'm sorry, why am I?
I.
Thank you, Morgan. I'm sorry. Okay, and then we are down to the policy review at the last meeting that we.
Actually, we need educational equity.
Oh, there, I don't know why I skipped that one. I really actually love how this one was done and written. So on to that one, I will entertain a motion to find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER6, I mean, E6.
I made a motion that the board find the superintendent's performance to comply with E6.
Okay, and any discussion?
I think we've had our discussion.
I think.
I actually, I, I think this policy is comprehensive. And I believe that there had to have been a tremendous amount of work from the superintendent's team in creating this policy. And this monitoring report tells me that it works, that there, there is systems in place to be able to monitor how this is moving through our particular system. I'm, I'm so pleased with the terminology in this policy and the fact that we are not talking about critical race theory in any way, nor do we teach that in our school district. This is what we've moved toward, which is educational equity for all students. So here, here, good job.
Yes. And I, again, I, I love it. So, okay, then, any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, I think this was, we've commented on this before, but I think Dana has done a very good job by what we have not heard. And I just think that this, our whole. And I just think that this, our whole discussion of that went forward with no not much of a ripple on the water. And I think that was exceptionally well done.
All right. Okay, well, then we will, um, I will uh, move a roll call vote, roll call vote uh, to find the um, superintendent's performance to comply with E six. John?
I.
Art?
I.
Arla?
I.
And Laura?
I.
Okay, so.
And you need to vote too, Leanna.
Oh, and, oh, and I on all three of these as well. And Morgan? I don't want to miss that one.
I.
Okay. All right, and then um, now on to the policy review. Um, this is uh, the board's opportunity to discuss, propose and or make revisions to the policies. The board reviewed these policies for compliance in its previous meeting. This is an opportunity for the board to consider any needed changes to these recently monitored policies. The board did not indicate a need to revise these policies during our monitoring review. Okay, and so ER ten and ER thirteen. ER ten was the academic standards and practices. And ER thirteen, the mandatory policies. Did we have any comments or things that we came up in our brains?
I'd just like to say, in general, I'm pleased with this whole system of how we do this review for all of our, our policies. Um, that we do look at each one of them at least once a year. And we have had times where we have changed some, some of the, the policies. Um, somewhat, sometimes a lot, sometimes a little bit, but um, the fact that we do this means that we're keeping up and I'm very appreciative that we do this.
I agree. Okay, so then um, any other, any other discussion on that? I don't hear any. So we are down to the adjournment phase, which is uh, looking to the now, is this where we move the, the student good of the order to the beginning of this one? Okay. So do we want to start with that then?
I think so, right?
Okay, and so do we have any good of the order uh, student um, comments or remarks? Morgan or?
Um, no, not really. Uh, I gave most of mine already previously in the meeting. In, so as of right now, I do not have anything to say.
All right, and uh, the board and superintendent, anybody uh, anything for the end of the meeting here?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Well, I did, you know, we're in odd times. I was hoping to be able to participate in the as a judge in the statewide competition for we the people, but here we have a board meeting and we're doing it on Zoom and they're meeting in person. Well, I'm not gonna meet in person. Um, and so it's just, I'm just commenting what odd times we've get things going in two directions at once. One, as though there were a real serious situation with respect to COVID and one, as though there weren't.
Now, uh, anyone, anybody else? Okay, and uh, I wanted to uh, comment about the um, the Zoom that we got to be a part of um, just recently, and I forgot her name. Um, but she is a um, I believe she is a behavioral psychologist or she's talking, she came on to talk about um, the the stress and um, the way that that the trauma and the effect that people are really tired, but it's not just the kids, um, after all of this, uh, the pandemic and everything weighing down on we've looked at the kids and of course they're helping uh, them, but helping um, the teachers. Um, and the uh, one that came up was the um, compassion fatigue. And when you think, gosh, do I not care anymore? You know, just because you're so tired and you're just you've had tears about it and you're just stressed out and you're just to that point where you wanna you'd not, that you care less, you're just so tired, like when you cry so much that you can't cry anymore. It's that, that washed out kind of feeling that she touched on that so much so that it made an impression on my husband in the room that he wanted to take that to his, his place over in the shipyard. Um, and so it was a very good presentation. Um, and Dana, um, uh, we all got to watch that, so um, it was a wonderful thing. So um, Dana, did you have anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, um, so our board self-assessment will be done now by um, Art Whitman, and do you have that?
I do.
Okay.
So for the board self-assessment, this was a fairly uh, straightforward and, and relatively non-complicated uh, meeting, um, but that doesn't mean anything. That's not part of the assessment. Um, for the, for our general meeting behavior, there's a whole set of, you all know this, but the whole set of criteria, the agenda being well planned, the board following his agenda, board members being prepared for, um, not, not having interruptions, uh, how we do our deliberations, um, being in public, you know, participation being balanced, that sort of stuff. All those factors, I marked this as satisfactory. Um, I didn't see any difficulties there. Then on the governance principles review, which is a whole series of ten different things, uh, board action occurs at the policy level, we review policy. We minimize time spent monitoring past performance, et cetera, et cetera. Once again, I checked yes for all of them, even though we didn't write any new policy today. Um, I just checked it, yes. Um, but that was, means satisfactory. So the overall mark is satisfactory and um, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much, Art. And so our next board meeting date will be held on January twentieth at six thirty um, in the boardroom here at the district office. And um.
Is that gonna be actually at the boardroom or is it gonna be also on Zoom?
Um, well, here it says the boardroom, but um, maybe it's safe to say that we are um, we have always, subject to change.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so I um, will adjourn the meeting then.
Thank you.
Thank you.